Ten o'clock, we ready?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Doki. We are back. I'm excited to be here. So, let's start with Travis.
Yes, I'm just getting my welcome back after a week on. I'm just not doing my stuff here, so I think we better. Jen, are you first?
Yeah, I think I'm first.
Okay, perfect.
So, the first thing that I have for you is the two applications for point oh nine rural county sales and use tax funding for 2026. And Kevin is here to talk about his request for the EDC. We also have a request from the Port of Greatview. So, the EDC's request for 2026 is a hundred and fifty thousand and Port of Greatview is twenty-five thousand. So, I'll let you talk about your application if you want.
Sure, yeah, thanks Jen. Commissioner, it's good to be here with you this morning. So, we are back in front of you for our 2026 funding request. If you've reviewed the document that I sent over earlier this month outlines kind of some of the work that we have been doing, some of the work that we proposed to do with the increase. And part of the increase is related to some of the cuts that we've seen happen at the state level. And so, trying to keep the organization whole and moving forward. We fared a little bit better in the base funding cut category than some of our other rural ADOs in the state. Some of them had pretty significant cuts. But where we saw the biggest cut was to a program that the whole county has benefited from. And that was our ability to contract with a grant writer to focus on state and private funding opportunities that are available. And so, that's a program that benefited a lot of your community partners that we were able to do some pretty good work with. It would like to continue to have the flexibility and funding to do that. In the past, all the funding that we've received from the county has been applied to personnel costs. Would do that and it frees up our other funding to be able to go do that kind of work. We also proposed being able to do a little bit more economic impact analysis for projects that are on the SEDS list. And so, a lot of times, I remember being in your seat and looking at those projects and just wondering, what is the real benefit to the community and to your tax base and primary job creation, things like that, that these projects would provide if they had funding? And so, kind of a two-part thing, we'd be able to help some of those organizations pursue funding and then we'd be able to report back on just what the return on investment is for those projects getting funded. So, those are the two main things. But also, we're also proposing to be able to look at things like more outreach to non-English speaking entrepreneurs. We have a great team over at the EDC, but we're not multilingual. Unfortunately for us, though, we maybe should try Duolingo or something like that. But until then, you know, we've started to expand our materials in Spanish and English. And so, being able to provide that resource and translation services and being able to provide direct support to non-English speaking entrepreneurs is an important part of where we want to go with the organization as well. And the other thing that the funding helps free up is just our ability to have funds available for matching on different grants. We like to get the ones that are a hundred percent grant funded, but that's not always the case. You always, you know, have some grants out there that you have to put a little bit of your own money and resources into. And so, you know, two ways you can do that typically through in-kind contributions, which is usually staff time and things like that. But also, sometimes a cash contribution is necessary. So, a great example of that is, I think the last time I was here, I talked about the USDA grant that we had pursued to help support our ag economy. That had a twenty-five percent local matching requirement. We were able to cobble that together with a couple of partner organizations. But when you're going out for, you know, essentially a three-hundred thousand dollar federal grant, twenty-five percent of that adds up pretty quickly and so, it's hard to piece that together. So, just having the ability to cash flow through some of those things as those projects and opportunities come available is another area where we want to be able to have that financial flexibility to do that. We've done a good job this past year of recruiting new members to the organization, so expanding the variety of funding that we have, so we're not reliant simply on county and state funding. We've also had some increases in the other contracts that we've held. And so, just trying to continue to build an organization that is ready to meet Mason County's economic needs now and into the future. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a few. It's more a request for information.
Sure.
Send us. If you could send us over the breakdown of the other partners?
Sure.
How much they're giving, how much they're doing, appreciated. The, I'd like to see what we've given over the last, we'll say, three years. Maybe Jen, you can put that together for us, what we've given there. I know that before COVID, we were at ninety K. So, this, you know, over the last few years, that's quite a bit. I'd like to see what that looks like and when. Also, the ADO, how much money we phone, I think is the proper term, because it comes through us from the state to our Economic Development Council of Choice, right?
So, you're, the county designates an ADO.
Yes.
So, you just, this year designated us for the next biennium.
Yeah.
That money comes directly, that's the state funding that I was talking about, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to see how much that exaggerated.
Gotcha. Yep.
That's all, that's all my questions are.
Okay. So, I have two requests. EDC and Port of.
Port of Greatview and Mike from Port of Greatview, I see that he's on. So, I don't know if he wants to talk about their request at all, but it is for the dock, I believe, out there.
So, it's thirty-five thousand, ten thousand's been raised?
Yeah, so they're requesting twenty-five thousand from the point oh nine funds. And I would like to point out that the point oh nine funds currently have over three-point-six million dollars in cash. So, we have a large accumulation of cash, so just.
I'll ask that next, thank you.
You're welcome. And they bring in, I think the revenue is about one-point-two million each year for point oh nine.
So, on this one, it's not just a, because I didn't get a chance to read all the way through. I thought I did, but I didn't, I didn't see about the dock. So, this isn't just a maintenance request, Mike?
Yes, that is correct.
This is not just a maintenance request, this is a request to doing something on the dock as well?
This is a, there's a maintenance that is required for the dock and for a number of places along the facility there. It really focuses on improving, you know, public access, infrastructure to support marine commerce, recreation, tourism, local small businesses. And I think the upgrades that we're looking to do will definitely enhance safety for our visitors and really help support our nearby commercial shellfish operators, Fair Harbor Marina, and other community stakeholders who rely on our port facilities. As you probably, most of you know, the Port of Greatview receives about the lowest tax support of any ports in Washington State. So, we're real thirsty with our money, but we do have some parts of our facility that do need some needed upgrades and maintenance. And so, that's what we're looking to do. And the port is contributing ten thousand dollars from its operating budget towards this project. You know, hopefully demonstrating, you know, strong local commitment from us. And with the county's partnership through oh-nine fundy, we're hoping to leverage those funds and deliver, you know, lasting benefits for economic development in the region.
I appreciate the description because I was, it was starting to bother me. We started a couple of years ago using these funds through Greatview only. Nobody else has been doing it just for maintenance. The idea that you're doing also infrastructure improvements, that's a little different. So, I'd be supportive of it with that in mind. I just don't want the idea that every organization starts going doing just for maintenance every year, because I'm surprised more hasn't happened, but.
I agree with that, Commissioner. Thank you for asking that question and hopefully I was able to explain it a little better.
You did well.
I support both.
Yeah, as do I. I think one thing that we need to make sure that we remember is the county's return on investment. And I think that both of these projects, both of these show an investment in our community. And how that investment comes back to our community, I think, is larger than what we're donating, so.
Not donating.
Well, we're investing.
Thank you.
Okay, so the.
Jen, oh, I'm sorry. So, just to maybe Commissioner Netherland's question. So, our funding for this, from the state portion for twenty-four, twenty-five was ninety-one thousand. For twenty-five, twenty-six, it's seventy-four. So, you can see.
So, that's where some of the cut is coming in.
Yeah. And then, the county current year is a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. And then, previous year, two, past two previous years, I think, were ninety-nine.
Yeah, I thought that we were higher last year.
Yeah.
And then, ninety, it started increasing when COVID hit, because we also expected, like, Karen was out there giving, handling all our ARPA funds to all the direct people and stuff like that. There was a complete shift at that point to outreach that we'd had no ability to do without Karen, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Yeah. And the state grant writing support that we had, that has gone away. I have listed in here, that was about forty thousand dollars from the state to do that. We returned just over three-hundred thousand dollars worth of grants in about a six-month period to the county and partners, so.
And we also had some partnerships with you on some other.
Yeah, and the, you know, the industry sector analysis that we just completed and all that kind of stuff.
You know, I mean, I like to keep track of money, so if we can put something I got in email for me, so I'd have it in my head.
Appreciate it. Yeah, happy to do that.
Might as well share it with the three of us.
I will certainly do that.
Thank you.
And maybe Travis too.
For sure.
Well, I don't know.
Maybe Travis.
So, the next step would be to send a letter to the ports and the city, letting them know that we received these two applications and ask for any comment that's required by law. So, we could then put it on the September sixteenth action agenda. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, great.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah.
Get you that information and see you on the sixteenth.
Oh, and truly, I want you guys to know, all three of you to know that I really appreciate what you've done for the community and you don't spend money unwisely. What's, you know, and so, I wanted to thank you guys, all three of you, for everything that you've done.
Yeah, thank you, super grateful for that. Karen Leaf and Tiana Dunbar, just tremendous to work with. They have the community's interests in their heart and really grateful to be able to work with them every day. So, your support is definitely appreciated.
And more puppy pictures too.
She represents you well when she comes in.
Yeah, she does, yeah. No, she does a great job. And Commissioner Netherland, as you mentioned, when, you know, throughout the pandemic, the work Karen did, being able to support those businesses directly. And, you know, we saw, we saw far fewer business closures here than other communities did and it's in large part due to Karen, so, yeah.
And that, and that commission that was there that made those funds available to support. We, like Kevin said, we were far better than our surrounding counties, far better, so, yeah.
It was funny, because up in North Mason, she walked in the door of a hairstylist place, they threw her out. She said, but Randy said to go, oh, okay, come back and go in, go ahead and come in. And, but no, she contacted everybody on foot. She literally went to each business. It's almost unheard of, but it was huge difference. And you're right, we didn't lose any of our restaurants, we didn't lose any of our, not even one in our whole region up there.
Yeah, impressive work.
Yep.
For sure, so.
Thank you.
All right, you're good. I'll get out of your way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing that I have is the commissioners, your annual 2026 budget. I wanted to give you a chance to look at it before we officially turn it over to the auditor's office. And for the Commissioners Department for 2026, the preliminary budget is currently four-hundred-sixty-three thousand, one-hundred-four dollars. And last year for 2025, current year, I should say, is four-hundred-fifty-six thousand, seventy-three dollars. So, the increase is just over seven thousand dollars for this year. And that's in, due in large part to two computer replacements. One of them is in this room and then one of them is for Commissioner Netherland. So, the rest of the increases.
Mine's new?
Yeah.
Well, I had one from two thousand seventeen, I thought I just got a new one.
We're on a six-year rotation now.
So, that is my new one? That's God, yes. No, mine was from two thousand thirteen when I came in, that's what it was. And so, I've had one new computer since then, I didn't know it was time.
Yeah, the last few years, we've upgraded that plan. And so, now people actually have computers that work.
What is the goal?
Now, there's a concept.
Yeah, yeah, we have them on a good, you know, good rotation.
If we have to do it, it's fine. Mine, actually, I have no issues with it, zero at all. It doesn't give any glitches, it doesn't.
Yeah, I've heard you say that you're having problems, so.
Well, just with getting the one printer. It doesn't like to print from. But yeah.
I'll pass it along to you.
If you have to go ahead, it doesn't bother me.
So, yeah, if there's anything that you see that you want changed.
Actually, I haven't traded for the phone. My phone is getting old, very old, I think. I think I'm working on maybe four years.
Okay, so maybe, so we might need to look at the phone and improve that a little bit. Okay, I'll talk to IT about that and see what we want to do. And we can always look at that later on too. It's not the last, right now, today is not the last chance we're going to have to look at budget increases. I do feel like we need to be prudent and follow our own guidance in not increasing if we don't need to, which I know you, you do look at that, but I just felt that needed to be stated. But yeah, if you need a new phone, that's definitely something that, that is not.
I definitely need that more than the computer.
Okay.
There's no question.
Okay, any other comments or anything else that you want to look at? Okay, great. So, for now, I'll turn it in as-is and we can look at the phone later on.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the last thing that I have for you is the July financials and I'll share my screen for that.
That's his phone or does this rocket out?
It's Jason's theme song, so.
Is it really his?
No.
I was just, that one caught me off guard, just a little bit.
AC DC at least.
There you go. That would've been funny as hell if it was though.
Okay, so, no, it was Travis. Okay. So, beginning on.
Embarrassing.
Page two of the revenue. For, this is for the general fund. This is July financials, so we, we have through July, twenty-eight million, received twenty-eight million, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand compared to last year, twenty-seven million, four-hundred-and-six thousand. We're at sixty-four percent of our budgeted revenue in the general fund through July compared to last year, sixty-one percent. In the treasurer's office, we have received nineteen million, four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand this year compared to eighteen million, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand last year. We're at sixty-five percent of our budget, budgeted revenue this year compared to sixty-three percent last year. On expenditures for the general fund, we've expended twenty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-seventeen thousand this year compared to twenty-five million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand last year. We're at fifty-three percent of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to fifty-one percent last year. Under the special fund six-year recap, and I don't know if it's helpful for me to share this or not. I feel like maybe for the people online, but I know it's hard for you guys to read it.
I think online is great.
I'd say I have mine, so.
Okay. I mean, it looks like community development is down quite a bit, but they, they really aren't down that much. My meeting's in the way there. Okay, so, we had the, trying to think of when, when we did the ARPA transfer. And I think it was a little bit later in the year than this. So, I believe that was due to a big development payment that we had received last year. The difference in the.
Which line are you looking at?
The first line, the community development, why last year is so much more than this year's revenue.
A lot of growth of noise.
Three-hundred thousand-ish.
Yeah. Everything else looks pretty, pretty good. Lodging tax is up quite a bit, or is up somewhat. Everything else is up a little bit or somewhat. Except for lodging tax, we're down a little bit compared to last year, but that's due to a refund of about seventy-five thousand dollars. And that was, I'm sure, I don't have any details on that except for that it went to one payer. And I'm, I'm thinking it was over a period of time. I don't know how long that was, but it was paid back all at once. So, that's the reason for the decline in the lodging tax.
No, I was saying that other counties had the same thing. There were refunds in other counties.
Okay.
Too, so I think it was a, it was a DOR.
Mistake error.
Issues, yeah.
REIT one is up, REIT one and two is up over the last few years, so that looks good. Sales tax, we had a really large increase this last month, nine-hundred-and-forty-four thousand compared to eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand the previous year. So, for that one month, up eighty-four thousand, which is unusual to be up that much over one month. So, the projection now is over ten million dollars for the end of the year for sales tax. We budgeted nine-point-five, so that is looking really good, very healthy.
I love that we're conservative in our predictions.
Yeah, I mean, we try to be somewhat realistic, but that's the goal, is to be slightly under on the sales tax. So, it's nice when we hit that mark. Our cash at July thirty-first was twenty-five million, four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. And that is, you know, less than it was at this point last year, but our expenses have gone up. And so, we're, I mean, to me, we're right on track where we had planned to be. So, I'm pretty comfortable with that, so long as we don't start adding more, more things, more expenses. Our revenue again is at, in the general fund, is at sixty-four percent of our budget and our expenditures are at fifty-three percent. And if you look back over the past five years on both revenue and expense, we're right on track with where we usually are at this point in time during the year. For special fund cash balances, we are at sixty-six million, about eighty-nine thousand, and that is up over the previous five years overall. For motor pool, we had budgeted two-point-one million for twenty-twenty-five and we're at forty-five percent of our budget, so that's looking good so far. For special fund revenue, we have received thirty-two million, three-hundred thousand this year. And last year, we had received thirty-six million, two-hundred-and-seven thousand. We're at fifty-seven percent of our budget there compared, this year compared to fifty-six percent last year on the revenue, on the expenditures. For special funds, we're at, we've expended close to thirty million this year. And last year, we had expended a little closer to twenty-nine million. We're at forty-three percent of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to thirty-nine percent last year. And our county debt is the same as last month, it wasn't changed, so weren't any big payments or anything. So, we're at fifteen million, eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand, seven-hundred and thirty-three dollars. Any questions or comments on any of this?
We went back to the, why the sharp increase in the, where we are? Revenue? Or drop in revenue, I guess.
The special funds?
Yeah, special funds. We dropped from thirty-six million to thirty-two million.
So, the special funds have a lot of different types of projects. So, it's, they're not going to be like, typically, they're not going to be like the general fund where the majority of their expenditures are salaries and benefits and then operating is the smaller portion. So, the special funds, some of them have one-time grants. You know, they're, some of their bigger operating expenditures are capital. I think mainly it's the Belfer Sewer without really diving in. And yeah, the Belfer Sewer had their hookup fees. Yeah, so that's a huge portion of that. So, it's going to be things like that that is the reason for the big dip. And, and that's why I don't really like to show it as a comparable year after year for the special funds because of that, but.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on this? Thank you. That's all I have for you. Let's stop sharing.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
All right. So, the other thing that we had today is, when I came over, starting as the interim, we started the conversation again about joint animal services and animal control in Mason County. So, we were told that the thing we were waiting for was a conversation between Joint Animal Services and the Sheriff's Office to kind of hammer out some of the operational details and what that would look like. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago where there was a pretty good discussion for quite some time about, you know, how services would be provided, what they would be and those kind of things. So, I asked both Joint Animal Services and the Sheriff's Office to be here today in case there were any questions or anything you folks, you wanted to ask them. But at this point, it kind of comes down to a question of, do we want to contract with Joint Animal Services under the proposal that we had earlier this year? And if so, when do we move forward with that? Kind of what steps the commission would like to take at this point?
First, I want to, as you can tell, we had a change when you were working with Mark and everything like that. So, I appreciate the extra time and everything that it took to get reconnected and put some pieces back together again. I know for myself, one of the things that I still, I, first of all, I'm very supportive. It's necessary, it's needed, it's, it'll take, literally, put another deputy and a half back on, on the streets. But with the same time, I know the one thing I still need for myself before I could ever vote on something is I have to see it. And we have a rough proposal, but I've never seen the proposal.
So, I will say, as far as a contract is concerned, I advise them to hold off on putting in the time and effort to put together a full contract until we came back and talked to the commission about whether or not you wanted to spend the money at this time or whether or not because of potential budgetary constraints that we wanted to wait for a certain amount of time. I want to put them through that hurdle.
That's not a problem, I understand that and I can agree with that. I'm just saying that for myself, that's why I think I hold it back to say I'm supportive is I, even being supportive, I can't be without actually seeing the stuff. But I do think it's, government is funny. We have a lot of things that people want to do in government. It doesn't mean that we should do it in government and it doesn't mean that that's the best place for our money. But some things are important, some things government should do. And if we should, we need to sometimes go through the other processes, see what's not needed if we have to make adjustments. This is one of those ones that I think is extremely important. And I think it's proved out to be important, as we all know from the community and also the Sheriff's Department over the years.
Yeah, I support moving forward on that. I hear several constituents are having serious problems with roaming packs of dogs.
I just worry about the budget and I want to make sure that, that the service that we provide, return on investment, I spoke about that earlier with the, with the point oh nine funds. I want to make sure that what we invest is a benefit to our community, not donate. Not done it. So.
And I think uh, I, I, I would throw out there that maybe asking the sheriff's office how you know, they perceive that benefit to the community because it impacts their operations and their ability to provide service um at the sheriff's office level. So I think that's probably the best place to start with where.
Under share?
Well, clearly it is a benefit to the county having animal control services. Um, to what extent? That depends on the the call loads that we have. Um, sometimes we can handle some of the animal control calls, sometimes we can't. Uh, we are limited in our resources, so we respond to to calls for service that are involving uh uh life delivery, you know, taking care of people uh more than we do worrying about animals. But there are those times that animals calls happen and we have to deal with them and it creates a heck of a lot of confusion for our guys who do not normally do it. Um, is it advantageous to have this? Yeah, it is. I know that we have about a hundred, I think it was a one thousand two hundred calls that I gave you, yeah, uh last year. And I analyzed those calls against the proposed generic contract that we were, the discussion. Looks like about sixty-five percent of those call load would be handled by uh J A S. We would still have forty-five percent would be handled by deputies in some fashion, whether it's because of the the time that the call comes in or the nature of the call, um, what have you.
So I know that we had a, a, a rather large animal issue.
We've had a couple of those.
How, how long, what's the amount of time that our deputies were there compared to how J A S would be there? Does that make sense?
I honestly, I, I think that in those large cases, we would be co responding.
Okay.
Um, our deputies would get the initial response more than likely and go, oh, and hand it over to J A S and then work with J A S to get whatever search warrants are needed. And J A S would help us line up with um all the assistance and and resources that we need to take care of the animals. It would not be a quick, down and dirty, easy function. I think the last two that we've had have gone three, four, or five days. And you guys have stepped in, Pierce County stepped in.
Yeah.
And it, it's, it's complicated trying to get all these other resources to to step in and help us. Um, and they have the technical means and know how to do that.
I mean, and we can speak from our perspective and I'll let Sierra talk a little bit more. Just, just let me introduce myself real quick though. I'm um Sarah Hawk. I'm the executive director for joint animal services. Um, and this is Sierra T. She's our animal welfare and field services manager. And she can actually speak more towards timeframes of when we're looking at some of these large-scale cruelty cases versus how they were previously handled with us being on site for a couple of them.
Yeah, um, I'd like to give an example. Um, if you saw in the news, the case that we had Thurston County in February this year with around six hundred animals. Um, five hundred of those were chickens that were bred and raised with the intention of animal fighting. So there were those animals in the property addition. There were around a hundred livestock animals as well. Um, the advantage to having animal control involved because this is such a high-profile case, I don't need to explain to you that people involved in animal fighting are involved in many other levels of crimes as well. But there is a lot of work and planning that goes into these types of investigations. For one, these, and I won't worry too much, but these chickens are bloodlines. They come from properties across the country. There's a lot of that involvement. And so one of the things we did is we identified, photographed, documented, and banded every single bird on the property. And that took around eight hours. And so I was able to facilitate our partnerships with agencies across the state to come in and help with that. Um, and so while we were able to focus on that, the deputies and detectives of Thurston County could focus on searching within the homes for that additional paraphernalia and supporting evidence. Um, and so we were able to knock all that out actually in one day. And then the following week, we're able to go and get the remaining amount of animals because we only impounded uh around sixty chickens. There was some livestock that went as well. Mason County helped us on that case in the initial response. We helped them, you know, last year they come help us. That's how this works. Um, and then we went and pounded the remaining around four hundred birds on the property as well. And we did that in, I think, maybe only four hours. It was quite impressive.
Um.
But compared to when you don't have these, this time to research, investigate, and plan, yeah, you're out there for three to five days because you're doing it all in real time, trying to figure it out rather than having people who are dedicated to this. Uh, animal crimes are very niche. It's a, you know, I, I've been in this field for around ten years. Um, and this is, this is what I do. This is my career, whereas like expecting deputies to handle this call volume in addition to all the human crimes they do just is not realistic. And um so my, what I would really like to do if we were able to to do this partnership is provide the service to Mason County that desperately needs it. You have a lot of people out here who are passionate about animals. And what I will also say is where there are humans, there are pets. So when you have natural disasters, when you have people facing a crisis, animals are there. And so I think that, you know, bringing us in is going to be a huge benefit to the community and the pets.
So you talked about the, the, the chickens.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm sure, because you said that there were, there were cross lines or the, the breeding. Other states were involved as well?
So it, I know, that's a little confusing.
It gets fascinating after a while to do the deep.
I could nerd out on this, so you don't have to go in too deep, but we can talk.
She said chickens in her yard, by the way. They, they don't bite yet.
Um, so.
Or fight yet.
And in addition to the, the work that I do uh with joint animal services, I also serve on the board for the Washington Animal Control Association as well as the Washington State Animal Fighting Task Force. Um, and so in my investigations, what, what I was able to establish by looking at all the bans on these birds, what the information we have there links us to game farms is what they're called, these game farms that are bred. They're identified with game farms across the state. So they are shipping birds, you know, from, from all these different regions, um even potentially across uh country borders as well. Um, and so, yes, there are other states involved, um but we focus on our state understanding that there is uh connections to, to crimes across the country.
Okay.
Commissioner, what I had, uh, we had a disconnect with changes, stuff like that. Uh, mind, uh, our administrator, that there was a request for a green star uh for employee that came from their organization for one of the deputies. If we could try and look that. If we could look that up and and please make arrangements to finalize that so we can get that green star.
I think that was in her email.
Yeah. And then uh, I wanted to point out for myself, some of the biggest issues I have, of course, is just safety all around, even for our citizens. You know, uh, we have a huge problem. You can send a deputy out there, but if they got no place to put him, no place to to, to do anything and they have to sit there with the animal or leave the animal in a position they know is not right. That's where this has become so extremely important. Uh, just the ability to hand off the issue. It may not be at the right time because, you know, you don't work twenty-four seven, but at least it gives them the ability to hand it off. I remember one, one of the first times I was working with you, you were sitting in North Mason, you were telling everybody about one of the problems we had with people with mental health and people with some of these other issues, you had no place to hand them off. And your deputies had to be there. I never forgot that. It's the same thing that goes with this. As long as we have nowhere to hand them off and no ability to get them off the street, we're gonna have to repeat the same call over and over and over again. So I definitely appreciate you guys. Uh, and I wanna say it's been a problem having a Sierra and a Sarah uh when I'm calling, talking to them on the phone. Took me a while to put the two together. Uh, so I apologize for any time I got that screwed up because it did sound the same, no matter how you said it to me.
You're not the only one. And now Thurston County has a deputy prosecuting attorney named Sierra, so it's.
That's nice.
We call ourselves Sierra squared.
Nice. But I definitely appreciate your patience and your time as we're going through all this. Uh, but I absolutely think that it's necessary and I, I think you guys uh were the ones that have everything that we've asked for for the time being. Now, we were talking to two-year contract uh when we were discussing before, to make sure that everything works out well. But again, uh, I'd still have to see the contract.
Yeah, and that was definitely going to be the next step, but I wanted to make sure that uh all three the commissioners were in agreement that they wanted to move forward on this. And so I will also speak to the quality of life issue that you talked about, benefit to the Mason County citizens. Got a little bit of experience from this from my uh previous life. And I will say that the sheriff's office is not great at the quality of life issues that they have to respond to. And dog calls certainly are one of those, um mainly because they're dealing with priority things that have to, have to do with other major crimes. And so um if you wanna talk about an impact to the citizens and an ability to have uh an impact on, on the folks that they will see, certainly animal control services wa- is one of those because menacing dogs and things like those, um there's certainly major quality of life issues that the sheriff's office just does not have the time or capacity to handle. And so um for the, the cost of the contract, I think the, the benefits for quality of life, this is, this Mason County is really high.
Alright, so I guess.
Travis?
Yes.
I think that meeting that we had, what was it, two, three weeks ago with them, we were discussing about shooting for a timeframe around the first of the year. Wasn't that because they have to take time to get somebody hired and what have you? Um, so we've got, we've got some time here to set up and stuff, but.
Yeah, so my, my hope would be that we could get a, a pretty decent rough draft of a contract written up so that we could have that reviewed. So that uh, um, once the commission agreed that, you know, that, at least it was a solid rough draft and that's what uh we were working on, then they can work on the logistics of what they needed to do on their end and then shoot for a beginning of the year start date, I think, is what we all kind of agreed would be a good path forward.
With the idea that we would sign the contract, but with payments not being implemented until after we've hired and trained somebody. But that way the contract is secure, so we can hire that two-year term limited physician that goes with the contract.
Yes.
So you don't wanna hire somebody on specul- speculation.
No. But we also don't want to set the expectation of like, hey, we signed a contract to start in January one, you're providing services and we don't have the staff to do that appropriately. And so we wanted to make sure um that there just was that understanding of lag time, that yes, the contract is signed, but payments don't actually start and we don't actually start enforcing that contract until somebody is hired and trained and able to actually be out here during our contract.
Alright. Well, I think you got three.
Cool.
Yep. Alright, well then you folks will get to hammering on the contract and uh loop back with me and we'll revisit it as soon as we can.
Before we go further, something I'd like for you all to consider, uh, I know that uh I am not, I wanna make it real clear to those in the public, I am not in favor of forced uh licensing for all animals in a rural county. It just doesn't make sense. But when there are tribal animals or they are picked up, I would like to see us consider having a requirement for licensing and stuff like that when they are picked up. Because licensing may be chipped. I don't know what all you guys have for options. I do know that uh our auditor could probably do it without uh increases staff, at least that's what was said. Uh, but I wanna see what that would look like. I think that it's important. We don't wanna just keep bringing animals in and then have them just go back out there again uh without some type of, I don't wanna say penalty, but I'm gonna say penalty for, for the owner that lets it, these things happen.
And those are, those are codes that we can help advise on and that's part of our role as well is as we go through this, we are going to see some of the codes that need improvement to allow for enforcement.
I believe that we have something already in our codes that, that address that, but I don't know. I, it's, it's because of, it's a it's a bad dog.
Is it one of the potentially dangerous dog?
Yeah, potentially dangerous dog. Yeah, they have to go on, on, on our notice that, that there are stuff which, that didn't happen years before. I'm not the sheriff, she has to.
So let's, let's take a look at it and see what there is, because I don't, I don't want any department to offer yet that they could do this, because what I'd like to do is do a little bit more control, because there is um, information in our code. So it's four point zero eight, so take a look at that one. Um, but, so I do know that we have something in our code already, so if I could have you guys take a look at that and.
I wasn't at that point anyway. I was just putting it out there because I'd like to have those things put into place. Cause uh, when I worked with them, they were very gracious about explaining to me, there's a lot of different things that they can bring us that will make it their job easier and make us more effective. That uh, this was one of, one of them and I'd appreciate anything you bring towards this, because I'd rather have more in place before than trying to do cleanup afterwards.
Four point zero eight.
Well, and I think one thing we can do as well regarding uh potentially dangerous and dangerous dog designations is putting it into our software that we use. That way when that animal does come in, that animal's like been identified and we can kind of track and go forward that way, whereas now I don't think it is as easy to access. So if we do see an at-large, there's a difference, right? Because in the services we're gonna be providing, we will not be enforcing at-large animals, because that would require sheltering contract as well. But if it is a dangerous dog at large, that's absolutely different. So having that, um, that information in our system will, I think, be very helpful.
Yeah, I like it.
I look forward to seeing the contract. That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Moving on. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Why'd you groan?
I know, I heard that too.
It's that old man thing.
So can we have you, us to introduce?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Sure.
Um, Annie Wilson, she is our new um permanent support tech. Uh, she took the place of Kathy Soche, which came across the street.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so a great addition for you guys. Um, but uh, uh, Annie was already working with us, so it was a smooth transition. Uh, we're both trying to understand the budgeting stuff that much more. That's one of the reasons for us being here, just, I know Jen was speaking today and just trying to absorb as much as we can so we can um better affect uh the department, a lot of the public, so yeah.
Yeah. And I know you stole Annie from us.
Well, I didn't pull up that part.
Yeah, originally, yeah.
She chose us.
Started at the switchboard and then.
Ouch!
The building, yeah.
And you were always incredible. We very much appreciated you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
She still is.
Yeah.
I have no doubt.
Well, welcome.
Very excited for my new position and look forward to learning a bunch.
Yeah.
I always think it's best when we literally grow all the way to the top, which is.
Yeah. Very cool, yes.
It's good to have that knowledge.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, growth. Potential, so yeah.
And I know Kathy will still be a resource for you.
She still is, yeah. We still lean on her.
Lots of training. Make lots of visits to visit her in her new office over here and train some more, yeah.
Yeah, she's pretty awesome too.
Yeah, she's been with us for quite some time, so her knowledge base is.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, can't beat it, so.
Yeah, she's great.
Good.
Yeah.
Sorry for putting me on the spot.
No, it's okay. Thanks for letting us watch and everything. It was good.
It was good having you aboard.
Well, actually, Commissioner, you should be demanding she be here on the next Tuesday to introduce her to the public.
Well.
I was gonna say, it sounds like she has that day off. Yeah.
Okay. I'm telling you.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, welcome. Hey, you got anything else, First? Turn?
I do not.
Um, I have one thing. So I know that we were working on um getting information out there on the Belfair Sewer. How is that progressing?
Well, um, as of, what was it, the week, I was gone last week, so the week before last, um, we took that document, I believe you made a couple alterations to it based on some feedback from Commissioner Netherland. And um I gave that document to Chris and had him cross-reference um the information in the document with briefing, uh briefing documents and other things that had come to the commission so that um, it, the specific information that was in each one of the sections could be shown to loop back to a briefing document that was presented to the commissioners as much as was possible. And I think he also provided links to the commission briefings where those were discussed so that people could actually go to Mason Web TV and look at those historical um, um documents as far as the commission meetings and the videos on those, so that they could see the discussions and, and what all the positions were there. So um, it was just an effort to try and loop back to things that were actually on the record as much as possible.
And he asked that I pulled off until he gets back, so I never had the meeting yet. He was gone. So please, I could take it, we're gonna make arrangements to get together this week.
Well, I, I think the, I guess the only concern that I had about that was that I wanted to ensure that all three commissioners had the opportunity to speak openly in a meeting about what was in the document so that um, we could have an open discussion about objections and, and whether or not that was necessary, because I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the other commissioners feel about what's in the document to the extent of its historical accuracy or any of those things. I was not involved in those conversations and so I just wanted the commission to have the opportunity to have that discussion.
That's what I would prefer.
I was saying, I thought we agreed I was gonna meet first, but if we wanna do it in public, it's gonna be dirty, but we'll do it. Cause some of the stuff that's in there.
Can you, can you write down first what your, what your concerns are?
I definitely will. That's. I definitely will, that's what I was gonna do with the meeting. The meeting was supposed to be with Loretta, and because, so Loretta, Loretta worked on that, but.
That sounds verbal, not, and.
Well, both. I'll handle my own, I, I always do, I do, I do well.
I know that for a fact you do. And so I, I want to make sure that, that our staff isn't. How do I want to say this? I want to make sure that everything that's in that document is correct. But I think, I feel that the only way that we can make sure that, that it's correct is if all three of us are in that conversation. Actually, you know, all of us here are in that conversation as well. Because I went, I scoured, Frank gave me a notebook that has all that information in there, and I went through every bit of it, everything aligns. So I just want to make sure that everything is factual.
You're the only one that's had that conversation, I haven't had one with him, so I, I would.
I didn't have a conversation, I sent her information. So all my, everything I've had is, is written down.
Okay, so, like, like I said, I can do it either way. I would rather do it so there's not embarrassment, but I, I will, I, I got no problem with this. I know the knowledge back from the back of my hand, I've been doing this for all these years, I can assure you, and then I can also always back up what I do, too. So it's actually pretty easy, but I, if I was under the assumption that Loretta had written a lot of this, and if that's the fact, I want to point out some of the things in code and stuff like that that are not accurate. But if we want to do it in public, we can. I just thought it was safer.
I'd love to see what you.
Well, that's what I was going to do, I was gonna put it together, have the discussion with Loretta in his office so that he was there to see if she also, I don't know how much she wrote or, or what, that's, that's the thing. I was under the assumption that she wrote a lot of that, but if she didn't, then it won't be the same issue. But if she did, we'll clarify it, if not, then we'll clarify it in here. Then we'll clarify it in, in the newspaper, and we'll clarify it in, on Facebook, and we'll clarify it everywhere. Well, I'm just saying, if that's what it is, this is my community.
I just want to make sure that the truth is out there.
Me too.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Then we're at the same goal, but she did this per my request.
I know, that's why I said, I haven't talked to her about it.
Because of all the misinformation.
That's why it was important to get together. In last meeting, I thought we had agreed to have me get together, but he was gone for the week, so we had to wait till he got back. But if that's changed, then we'll change it, we'll go back to the other.
I, I guess, maybe I was, maybe I was confused about what we thought the process moving forward was. I actually was hoping that the, the commissioners would provide some clarity on, on what it was that we wanted the process moving forward in order to put out whatever documentation was on there. That, that's what my request was. My second request was specifically for Commissioner Netherland was, my hope was that if we could have something in writing before the meeting, so that if there are specific objections in there that could be addressed by staff, and then they would have good answers before we had that type of a meeting, rather than just going into the meeting cold and then having to loop back again. I guess that's what my, my request was.
Well, again, I'll put together the documents and, or present them, but I'd like to have the conversation in the room, so I can have them tell me if they think it's different. And that's what I thought you, because you asked me if we could hold off till you get back. That's what you said as you were walking out the door, and so that's what I went along with.
If I, if I may, I'm, you're, if you're waiting for input from me, I read through all that stuff, and it's mostly historical information that, you know, I'm absorbing. So I can't really give a lot of context in its accuracy, I just, this is, you know, information I didn't have before, so I can't evaluate what, you know, the accuracy of. That's my comment to your first question, was you get my feedback, it's like, looks good. I'm, I'm absolutely want, happy to get more information out to the public, so, but that's, it needs to be accurate. That's, that's my only comment.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, that doesn't help you much, but.
No, that's, that's okay. I, like I said, I don't have all the historical context either. I don't know any of the history or the, the information behind it. I'm just trying to, try to facilitate a way in which it is the smoothest and most agreed upon by the commission as we move forward. And so I know it is a contentious issue, and I'm just trying to navigate how the, the best way to do that and, and maintain relationships and, and work our way through it. So my hope was that we would have some sort of agreement on how we move forward to do what one part of the commission was requesting, while still respecting the opinion and the knowledge that comes from Commissioner Netherland and his background. That was my, my hope.
Yeah, let's just get it out there, get it done.
Okay. Well, then I will work with Commissioner Netherland, and we will talk about how to make sure that he has the conversations that he wants to have so that we can move forward and decide on what the best process to make sure that everybody gets the information out that they believe is important.
I like it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, since I wasn't here for the calendar updates, I was not planning on going to the, um, Community Voice. But if we've got two other commissioners going, I might go.
Yeah, Community Voice, I was invited to an event called Meet Your New Commissioner. So why this is becoming a joint commissioner event, I don't understand, but I. First of all, I'm a member. Second of all, I actually created the organization. Third, I was called to and asked to, to show up, why they didn't put it on there, I don't know. But Kat had called me and asked me to, to show up to, to discuss some of that and be there available for questions for the public.
I'm a member as well, so.
Yeah. I don't think I am a member. Yeah, I didn't know, and I didn't know it was contentious until you said this, because I, I'm going, because I was called and requested.
All right. There we go. And that's all I have planned for the week. Well, not really, but I'd rather be on the ship than missing my, my buffets. And my drink package. Right, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Nothing else?
Not for me.
All right, motion?
Move, will you adjourn?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.